Good morning, everyone. This is the Wednesday, December 7th, 2022, regular board of the, regular meeting of the NAGS Head Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. We'll have a few moments of silence today. I note that today is Pearl Harbor Day. We've had a couple of wars that promised to end all wars, and yet today, as we approach the Christmas season, there are people living joylessly in war zones all around the world. And I ask that, as we enjoy this Christmas season, that we remember those folks. Now, if you'll please stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I note this morning that Commissioner Brinkley is excused. He had something that arose late and was unavoidable, and so he will not be at this morning's meeting. And so before we adopt the agenda, we have an item down on our agenda, which is a discussion of the, it's item G1, which was a table discussion of the proposed museum at Jacque's Ridge, so that we might discuss that and take unanimous action. I'd like to postpone that until our next meeting, when Commissioner Brinkley will be here. And so what I would suggest, in the interest of folks who are here, just so that they're aware, they may, of course, remain to speak, I would suggest we amend the agenda to remove that item and place it on the next meeting agenda, rather than waiting until we get there to table it.
Second.
Motion and second, motion from the mayor and a second from Commissioner Sears. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. That brings us to recognitions.
Adoption of the agenda as amended.
Excuse me. Thank you very much.
Motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to adopt as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you very much. We do have an agenda now. So that brings us to recognitions, and we will start with a new employee, and I'll call Nancy to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce you to Matt Carrera. He comes here from Rhode Island, and he lives in Killable Hills with his wife Andrea and their son Zach. He loves sports with his son, especially soccer. He loves fishing, and he loves NAGS Head. We're very glad to have him. He comes to us with a lot of electrical and construction experience.
Very nice.
Matt Carrera.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. That brings us to the Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year Award. And Andy, I'll just take the whole thing, if that's okay with you. So what I would like to do is ask that, call out our nominees and ask that they please line up over there in front of the, in front of the chief, along that table, if you would. Tax collector Linda Bittner. Good morning, Linda.
Morning.
Permit specialist Kim Thompson. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry she's sick. I'm sorry she's missing today. Building inspector Steve Zizmansky. Facilities maintenance technician Bruce Erickson. Morning, Bruce.
Morning.
Fire captain Phil Wolfe.
Morning, Phil.
Morning.
And police officer Christian Aguirre. Morning, Christian. Before we announce our Employee of the Year, I'd like to offer the board an opportunity to comment, and Commissioner Brinkley was not able to be here, but he did send comments, which I will read on his behalf. Congratulations to each of you on being nominated by your coworkers for the Sergeant Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year. This is an honor that each of you should cherish. Choosing one employee for this award has always been difficult, and this year it was no different. Again, congratulations to all of you and to the, and to the Employee of the Year. You know, before I ask the other commissioners to comment, I'll say, and you know, I've said this a couple of times, I said it at the Christmas party the other night, it's our employees who make this town. And I said it the other night, you guys have, you do exemplary work. You make this an easy town for the board to run. We have a lot going on. We have a lot of projects that all of you are involved in, whether it's improving the town's finances, dealing with construction, dealing with expanded facilities, fire response, police response. You know, we have new streets, new water lines, and you're all doing exemplary work, keeping up with it, and it's an honor for us to be able to recognize you. Commissioner Cahill.
Thank you, Mayor. It is a hard decision, because we do have great employees, and the six of you, including Kim, are no exception. Y'all are just truly the cream of the crop that we recognize every year. I appreciate your service, your work. We have a tax rate that's truly second to none, and we appreciate that. Thank you, Linda. Steve, you do a great job as our building inspector. I know you're busy as you can be. Facilities maintenance are busy. Fire department's always busy. I have read, in your report the other day, I read a report about, I've never heard of a refrigerator fire before, but that's, I mean, the work that you do is amazing. Christian, can't say enough about the work you do. You have a great family. Your neighbors speak so highly of you all the time. So thank you all, each and every one of you, for your service to the town and the people in NAGS Head. I'm not sure all of our citizens realize how lucky they are to have people like you working in this town.
Thank you. Commissioner Sears.
I'd just like to echo what the three other commissioners have said. Irreplaceable, absolutely. Thank y'all very much for what you do.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yeah, I can't add a whole lot, except to say congratulations. You should be very proud, and as proud as we are that, you know, you guys work so hard and do such a good job. We appreciate you every day.
I'd like to ask the commissioners to come around front, and then we'll invite our Employee of the Year to come forward. And I'd like to ask our Employee of the Year, Bruce Erickson. This plaque reads, "Earl Murray Jr. Employee of the Year Award Presented to Bruce Erickson, Town of NAGS Head, 2022." Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service. Congratulations, Bruce. You know, it's a, it's a great honor, especially considering the folks that were standing there with you. Thank you so much for your, for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the board welcomes members of the public to provide comment on matters of interest or concern. This is an opportunity for people to address the board. The board rarely responds to public comment, and this is not really an opportunity for a dialogue. But for anybody who wishes to address the board, if you will please approach the podium, start by telling us your name and where you live, and then address your remarks to the board as a whole. I will also be keeping the time, and I'll let you know when your time is just about up.
Hello. My name is Barbara Costa. I live in Southern Shores. I am from the OBX Running Company, and we would like to request for the board's consideration a change in town code that would allow reoccurring events in NAGS Head to be held weekly, as opposed to the 25-day cycle that now exists. We thank you for your time, effort, and considerations, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hossel. Ms. Walters?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Susie Walters. I live at 415 Race View Court in NAGS Head. The item I'm here to speak on was remove the agenda, but I have carved out time today to be here, so.
Yes, of course.
While it is unlikely that the damage to the Regala Foundation is irreparable, I ask that you please rescind your letter, which included some inaccurate information. The letter you wrote to the state on October 20th. Truth, facts, and integrity have always been the hallmarks of the town of NAGS Head, and I hope you will consider rescinding the letter. Thank you so much for your time. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to all of you.
Merry Christmas, Ms. Walters. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Donna Greif, and I serve as the Government Affairs Director for the Outer Banks Association of Realtors, and I'm here this morning speaking on their behalf and their Board of Directors. The Outer Banks Association of Realtors is affiliated with the National Association of Realtors, as well as the North Carolina Association of Realtors. These associations adopt public policy positions, including housing policies. Their overall housing policy is to force or to foster an inclusive and accessible housing market through public education and observance of fair housing and equal opportunity laws. Furthering this policy, the Outer Banks Association of Realtors has adopted seven local positions of support, and the board has asked that I speak to you today about these local positions. They support incentives that allow higher density for year-round housing, support for local and regional transportation solutions, including public transportation to connect housing to jobs, policies that encourage accessory dwelling unit construction, housing regulation simplification and intergovernmental consistency to reduce cost, public-private partnerships that provide multifamily workforce housing, housing tax credits, and a property owner's right to rent their property on a short-term basis to guest. The Obar Board of Directors encourages all local governments to work diligently to identify flexible zoning regulations and to implement community initiatives that will increase our year-round housing stock. A proper balance of zoning regulations that permit multifamily structures is needed in all Outer Banks communities to provide housing to support our tourism-based economy. With the finite amount of privately-owned land in Dare County, the need to incorporate a mixed housing in our neighborhoods is essential. If zoning regulations are amended to limit multifamily structures in your historic character area of NAGS Head, we hope the town will also offset that option by adopting regulations to encourage year-round housing development elsewhere in the town. Policy LU27 of the NAGS Head Comprehensive Plan states the need to promote and expand the types of housing and accommodations for varying income levels, aging populations, and the seasonal workforce within the town. LU27C specifically references exploring options for accessory dwelling units and other housing appropriate for seasonal populations. Zoning amendments to implement these land use policies should also be considered. Thank you for this opportunity to comment, and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Greif. Is there anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Basil Belches. My wife and I live at 3521 South Memorial Avenue in NAGS Head, which is in the old NAGS Head Place neighborhood, and it's adjacent to the 4.7-acre lot on Hollowell that's targeted for affordable housing apartments. I read an article dated December 5th in the Coastland Times. That article talked about the Dare County Board of Commissioners' November 7th meeting, during which the Dare County Board of Commissioners chairman discussed debunking the myths about affordable housing. I'm not here to talk about the pluses or minuses, or truths or myths of affordable housing. I'm here to talk about how no kind of high-density project is suitable in the historic character area between Danube and Hollowell Streets. A three-building, 54-unit apartment complex does not meet or fit in with the look and feel of the designated historic character area where the 4.7-acre lot is located. It doesn't matter if the complex is affordable housing apartments or luxury condos, they just don't fit. Additionally, our neighborhood of Old NAGS Place is one of the neighborhoods that are listed in the 2017 Town Comprehensive Land Use Plan, called a Neighborhood Character Area. As mentioned in the moratorium from October 19th, the town desires to protect these areas from incompatible land uses, land uses nearby. That includes high-density projects like apartments. I know the planning board is currently studying the historic character area between Danube and Hollowell Streets to determine if a more appropriate zoning designation is needed. I encourage the planning board to endorse a less impactful designation for the historic character area, and I encourage the Board of Commissioners to approve for such plan. Thanks for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Belches. Mr. Harrell?
My name is Bobby Harrell. I live on Roanoke Island, but I maintain an office in NAGS Head at 6701 South Crowatan Highway. I'm here to speak this morning regarding our need for essential and affordable housing. The site that's mentioned in, on East Hollowell Street, you know, the zoning does allow multifamily. When we first put this property on the market prior to COVID, it went under contract fairly quickly, and the proposed use by the developer was for Royal Farms Gas Station, which was at a light acreage, the zoning allowed it. But because of COVID, that contract was canceled and voided. You know, the interest now is by Woda Cooper to put essential housing there, and one of the main reasons they came to our area and were looking at this site was the need of the Outer Banks Hospital for housing for employees. Currently, of 136 of their primary staff, 30% of those people were qualified for housing at the site that Woda Cooper proposes to build. That's in roughly 40 units of 40 needs of the 54 that's proposed. So I think the need for it is a definite. As far as affordability, I did want to speak this morning and share some things that I researched, based on our MLS system here in Dare County. I think most of us would agree that, you know, our primary workforce and year-round residents live on the west side of the bypass. And I'm speaking as far as the west side of NAGS Head. Current lot sales on the west side of NAGS Head for this past year averaged 210,000 per lot, single-family lot. The current active lots, which there are only two west of the bypass active residential lots in NAGS Head, the average price on that is 217,000. Home sales on the west side of NAGS Head this past year averaged 561,000. The current active west-side NAGS Head homes, the average price is 620,000. As you can tell by those figures, they just don't work for the young couple or the central workers that we need in our community. Let's assume for a minute that someone moved to our area and wanted to buy a lot and build them a home. Assuming the lot purchase is $210,000 now, is what the market average is, and checking the local contractors, the average price for construction is running about $200 a square foot. So if someone wanted to build a 1,300-square-foot home, three-bedroom, two-bath, you know, conservative-sized home, the cost for construction would run about 260,000. So you totaled for that, what we would almost consider a starter home, would be 470,000. Based on today's mortgage rates, for a 30-year mortgage, that mortgage would be $3,100 a month. If you added in taxes and insurance to that, you'd probably be looking at another $400, which would be a $3,500 mortgage payment for a young person or starter home here in NAGS Head or the Outer Banks. If you looked at it and invested it, would build this home and rent it to someone, you'd probably be looking at even higher mortgage, because an investor would pay a half to 1% more on the loan and probably have a 20-year loan versus a 30-year loan. So investor would be almost $4,000 a month as far as mortgage taxes and insurance, which , you know, the market just won't bear that. We're already seeing some rental rates for three-bedroom homes approach $2,000, $2,200 One thing I would like to say is that I think Dare County does an excellent job of our education system, educating our students, preparing them for college. And most of us would agree, our children go off to college, we hope that they come back to our community and serve and work in our community. What we, you know, we're seeing, if any of you've ever been to these school award ceremonies, you'll see literally hundreds of thousands of dollars of scholarships awarded to these students. Very deserving. But for those students to come back here, it's almost impossible for them to afford to come here, particularly when looking at housing. So, and I mentioned the last time we met about Owens Restaurants, who's been in business over 70 years, having to close two days a week. Sam and Omis, who's been in business 85 years, celebrating 85 years, they're closing one day a week, just because of workers. Another instance of that would be Darrell's, that opened a second location in NAGS Head, and they closed two years ago primarily because of workers and the need for staff. And they've been in business 60 years, so, you know, when you look at these people who have that experience, second and third generations operating these businesses, it's a shame that it can't operate seven days a week. So I thank you for your time, and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Is anybody else who wishes to address the board?
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Commissioners. My name is Billy Mosely. I live at 301 West Soundside Road. For the last 35 years, I've been a NAGS Head resident for about 40 years, and I have been a member of the Jacque, Friends of Jacque's Ridge Board for the past 20 years. I understood that today we'd have a discussion about the Regala Foundation, and I understand that it's been postponed until the next meeting, but I still want to speak on our behalf and say that I wish to reiterate that the Friends of Jacque's Ridge has issued a resolution, and that the North Carolina State Parks Director, Dwayne Patterson, has expressed that Jacque's Ridge State Park is not a suitable location for the Regala Museum. This is simply an effort to prevent development within the park. This is in no way an attack on the Regala Museum, or Mr. Harris, or anybody involved in this effort. I am hopeful that with this statement, the town of NAGS Head and the Regala Foundation will support and respect these decisions now and for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosely.
I've also submitted our resolution from the Friends of Jacque's Ridge and our statement from Dwayne Patterson, the Director of North Carolina State Parks.
Thank you, Ms. Mosely. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Anyone at all? If not, at this time, we will conclude the public comment session. Thank you, Mr. Leidy. That brings us to the consent agenda, which you have before you with several items. Any motion would be in order.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That brings us to item F, reports and recommendations from the planning board and the planning development director, and... Good morning, Director.
Good morning. What I have for you this morning is not too lengthy, so I can probably go through it fairly quickly, and as always, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. To update on the recent planning board activity, the planning board did meet on Tuesday, November 15. During that meeting, they considered a special use permit site plan amendment for TW's bait tackle to reduce three required parking spaces with the use of three compliant bicycle racks. The planning board also heard a presentation on the draft appendix to the UDO as it pertains to tree removal and preservation standards. We also provided a short update to the planning board on the town's short-term rental program. And then we just had a really good discussion with the planning board about the historic character area that we've discussed with you previously as part of the 2022 Camalean Use Plan. At the planning board's upcoming meeting, which is December 13th, I just want to note that's a week earlier than usual because of the holidays, we'll be continuing the conversation about the historic character area, and I didn't include it in my report, but also we nettles with the Dare County Visitors Bureau and give a short presentation on the event site to the planning board. So with regard to Board of Adjustment, we didn't have anything in November. We also don't have anything scheduled for December, but I did want to note that Woda Cooper Development Company has submitted an appeal from the UDO Administrator's Interpretation that was issued on October 31st. So the Board of Adjustment will hear that appeal on Thursday, January 12, 2023. Following up with the voluntary septic subscription service, you're going to be hearing from our deputy planning director, Kate Jones, here shortly, about a request to rename this, this working group to the Septic Health Advisory Committee, and that committee will focus on how we're going to improve our existing program and make sure we're meeting all the goals and recommendations from our updated decentralized wastewater management plan. The Estrein Shoreline Management Plan, update on that, is that we did have a project scoping meeting on November 23rd. Part of that scoping meeting, they, we had conversations with multiple permitting agencies. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the overall project and provide permitting and regulatory information, hopefully to improve communications as we start actually looking at permitting some of these designs. We do intend to have the project wrapped up and to you, hopefully as early as the January 2023 meeting, for your review. The North Carolina Resilient Coastal Communities Program, they, we also discussed this program when we had the agency scoping meeting back in November. The primary focus of that meeting, it seemed to be discussions around the possible impacts to nesting turtles, so there's going to have to be some follow-up there. Additionally, the water level data loggers have been purchased, and those should be installed shortly. Not a whole lot of update for you this morning on the EV Action Plan or E-TIP, but with regard to Wilbon Park, staff is moving forward with the design of the accessible restroom, and we're currently working on the scope of... and we're currently working on the scope of work for that. The cost of the design should be less than fifty thousand dollars, so we're hoping to proceed under the Mini Brooks exemption to hire an architect to complete those drawings. We're hoping that we hear back on the accessibility for parks grant by spring of 2023. The Dune Management Cost Share Program, this is another item that I think you're going to hear a little bit more discussion on later on in the agenda, but at the time that I wrote this, we had forty-eight property owners participating, and a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of the one hundred and seventy had been encumbered. And I want to say that at this point, we're at one sixty-eight or even more, I think we're maxed out, so there'll be additional conversation on that later today, I believe. Just a brief follow-up on Doughty Park events, we've had three of our four holiday markets. The next one is going to be coming up this Saturday, December tenth, from nine to noon, so that's going to be our last holiday market. We did have a holiday market on December first, which was our night market, that was really well attended, and we also had our second annual tree lighting ceremony, that was really nice as well. So that is all I have for you for the departmental update, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Commissioner.
Thank you, I do have one question.
Sure.
Kelly, in reading your report, the townwide holiday decorating contest, could you tell me a couple of things about that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So this was a contest, we used to do this contest, the town used to do it previously, I think we did it in 2011, 2012. We are trying to reinvigorate that, and so there's four categories, I can't remember them off the top of my head, but there's four categories that you can be a part of. I think one was the Griswold House, one was anything but the house, if you have a dog house, or storage shed, or something like that. So we have those four categories, and then we're doing it for both commercial and residential properties. So if you want to participate in that, the application's on the website, we'll need that submitted by December ninth, and on December thirteenth, our Art and Culture Committee will break out into groups and go do the judging.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
As far as the E V A plan, are they looking at putting any at the parks at Welbon or at Doughty?
For the E V Action?
Yeah, just at, just at Town Hall.
So at this point, we're just trying to identify grant opportunities to provide them at town facilities, so we could certainly consider, I think we've been focused on Town Hall, but we could certainly look towards some of our parks as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I'll just, I should have passed this along to you before now, but about two weeks ago, we had our mayor's luncheon with the, also with the county board chair, and Southern Shores talked about having installed, I believe, two chargers at Town Hall on Southern Shores. And talking about sort of rolling out the chargers, there was a little bit of discussion there about perhaps getting all of the municipalities and the county together at some point, if we could identify our sites and get our grants together, and then perhaps purchase, you know, getting some purchasing power to install them and perhaps get a number of them at a better cost. And so if, when the planning, you know, when your planning directors get together, it's something that you might raise, because it was discussed at that, the mayor's luncheon.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Kelly, are you also doing the voluntary Septic Subscription Report?
I am not.
No, I see Kate, Kate's doing it. All right, thank you. So that brings us to consideration of a new charge for the Voluntary Septic Subscription Service Working Crew, excuse me, it's a mouthful.
It's a mouthful. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I wanted to speak to you today about the request for a different charge for the prior V S S S working group to be renamed to the Septic Health Advisory Committee. As Kelly mentioned, the consensus of the working group was that the town not pursue the Voluntary Septic Systems Subscription Service at this time, and some of that decision came from conversations about potential liability the town might take on being in a, what could be perceived as a contractual, contractual situation. So when we talked about this, we thought, well, it may make more sense just to really focus on education and outreach, because we have a great program as it is, and we've just made some recent changes to the program. So the charge now would be for the committee to become the Septic Health Advisory Committee, and it would be meeting quarterly, which is what we would recommend, so four times a year, and the, the committee would discuss the successes and challenges of the program generally, but also specifically look at the recommendations from the Decentralized Wastewater Treatment Plan and make sure we're on track. And the committee agreed that this was a good way to move forward. So today, staff is looking for, well, first of all, to answer any questions you might have, but also looking for, if you have some recommendations beyond the list of people here that are suggested to be on the committee, please, please let me know, and also we're looking for approval of this new committee and charge. And right now, we have Connor Twitty, myself, Kelly Wyatt, we would recommend keeping Kevin Brinkley as the board liaison, if he's willing, and then keeping Megan Lambert from the Planning Board, and she's expressed interest in staying on, as well as Bob Muller. And as I mentioned, we could bring in speakers from time to time as the committee sees relevant, whether there are more, you know, contractors out working in the field, or people from the Health Department, it's been talked about that could be valuable, is keeping that communication with the Health Department. So, wanted to also update you on where we are with some of that outreach, quickly. We have ran a G I S analysis, pulling out the addresses of the high-risk properties, so medium to high-risk properties in South Nagshead, so, and Connor has drafted a letter, and we've edited that, and that's going to be ready to go out, we're hoping to get that out this month, so those letters will go out to those high-risk properties. We've attended some events, including Realtor Fest with booths and information, and we're also looking to do a little more on social media, so we're working on that as well. Oh, and I also want to mention the welcome packet. That digital welcome packet is put together, and I believe that's gone out, no, not yet, but it is together, it's going under edits, and we have a lot of great information in that welcome packet. So that's where we're at. Do you all have any questions for me?
Do, do you recall how many of those properties were high-risk that you're sending the letter to?
The amount of, of actual letters, I'd have to look back in the Excel sheet, but do you remember, Connor, the number of properties in that Excel sheet?
Not the exact number, it was the majority of the west side of South Nagshead.
Basically.
Okay.
Yeah, west side of South Nagshead.
Okay. So some tens of, or perhaps even as much as a hundred or more properties.
I believe it's a hundred or more.
He's a hundred or more.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
The, the other thing would, would be that, you know, to, to keep progress moving along, it would be to ask for regular reports to the board.
Sure.
Assume you would, but, you know, at least semi-annually, not necessarily every, after every quarterly meeting, but to, to update the board a couple of times a year on how you're making progress on those objectives.
Sure, we can do that.
All right, Commissioner Sanders.
No, no, thank you for your work, and I think it looks great.
Okay, Commissioner Cahoon.
I think the work looks great and everything, might be wise to call, give a call-out to see if any other volunteers would like to serve on this committee.
Okay.
Especially if there are people in the South Nagshead area.
Yes.
That maybe would inform their neighbors and so forth.
Yes.
Okay, we can do that.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sears.
Now, good work. Do we need a motion to change all this?
We, we do.
I make a motion to change this presented.
Okay, all right, I'll say, second. I have a motion and a second to adopt the changes recommended by the, by the committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you all. Yes, Commissioner Cahoon.
That's a thought. Kate?
Yes.
Could you come back just a minute? Your welcome packet?
Yes, ma'am.
Might be good for you to send a welcome packet out to the O Bar, because they're the ones that are dealing with new people that are moving in or renting, and they would be a good resource possibly for that welcome packet.
That's a good idea. Okay, we'll do that. If you think of anyone else, just let us know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That would bring us to item H, new business being committee reports, and I'll start down here on the left with Commissioner Sears.
Nothing at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Cahoon.
No, I have no reports, thank you.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Sanders.
No, I think the Planning Director covered Estrein, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Yes, Commissioner.
Just saying that the Pedestrian Committee is still working.
Yes.
Moving forward, that people, all the members have given a list of their priority projects, ranked them and all with the information, and given it to Town Engineer Ryan to draw back up, and there'll be another meeting coming up.
Okay, so great, well, that's exciting.
It's a good group.
One of my favorite, and one of my favorite topics, so that's good, thank you, appreciate that, appreciate you reporting that to us. That brings us to item H two, consideration of board and committee appointments and reappointments, and we have for Arts and Culture Committee, Planning Board, and Nagshead Leasing Corporation, and you, I believe in the memo, let's see, I'll get the right document open, it indicates who those folks are and who was interested in being reappointed. So let's take these perhaps one at a time. Appointment or reappointment to the Planning Board, Kristy Wright, Gary Ferguson, and Molly Harrison's terms expire on January eighth, and they've all indicated that they would like to be considered for reappointment, and so either other nominations or a motion would be in order.
Make a motion to reappoint all three to the Planning Board.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Appointment or reappointment to the Arts and Culture Committee, Peggy Saporito and Carrie Oaksmith Sanders' terms expire on December the fourth, they've indicated that they would like to be considered for reappointment, and there are no other candidates who've expressed interest in serving. So a nomination or motion would be in order.
I make a motion that we reappoint both.
Okay, all right, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Appointment to Nagshead Leasing Corporation, Nagshead Leasing Corporation is a nonprofit, wholly owned subsidiary of the town of Nagshead, it is not a town board or committee, the corporation is used as a holding company. The December seventh meeting, today's meeting, and of course with the bylaws, they are requesting that we appoint Town Manager Andy Garman as the president.
Director.
Director, excuse me, director, that was the correct, that was a, a late correction, as director of Nagshead Leasing, and then they will, they will appoint other directors and officers as they see fit. So a motion to appoint Manager Garman or other action would be appropriate.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion to appoint Manager Garman as a director, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second, Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. That brings us to consideration of a bid award for a street resurfacing project, and is this going, this looks like this is going to be David. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. So back in mid-October, the town advertised for, for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three street resurfacing project, and this current fiscal year were very aggressive compared to what we had done in prior years. We had, I think, in total about six and a half miles of linear streets that we were proposing to resurface within the town. And so we had gone through a advertisement, and then we went through a rebid process due to the fact that we had only received two bids initially, and following the formal bid guidelines, it required us that if we did not have three bids initially, that we would have to go through a rebid process, and then that second bid, we could consider less than three bids. So just to give a summary of those streets that were covered with this project work, we were looking at Nagshead Acres Subdivision in its entirety, also Old Nagshead Cove, in those areas that were, where recently a water main replacement project had occurred, plus a section of Danube from one fifty-eight through to Old Cove Road. In addition to that, was East Barn Street from one fifty-eight all the way through South Virginia Dare Trail, and also to include the beach access with that project, there was also some drainage infrastructure replacements, as well as a water main replacement spanning from the intersection of East Barn Street and South Memorial Avenue, all the way up to just shy of Baltic Street. And then East Admiral Street was covered in that, and that was spanning from Wrightsville Avenue to South Virginia Dare Trail, and then we had structured in the bid, those were all base bid items, then we had to add alternates, which included both East and West Soundside Road, along with a portion of South Memorial Avenue, which was the lower half, down around East Bladen Streets, and there was also Bainbridge Street, that section from South Virginia Dare Trail all the way through Wrightsville Avenue. So in total, there, there was many areas that we were covering throughout town. The two bids that we received, we received from Barnhill Contracting and Fred Smith Company, the two proposals that we received were very competitive. From Barnhill Contracting, it was one point nine seven seven million dollars, and then from Fred Smith Company, one point nine six seven million dollars. So in review of the available funds for this project, we had to go back and look at additional funding resources. In the memo that's covered here on the second page, within this table right here, this table in green, highlights all those areas where the additional funds were sought. In total, we had identified one point eight eight six, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for available funds for the project, and we had broken that down into both a revised bid amount, along with a construction contingency. And just want to give you a little bit of background on that revised bid amount, we went through with a contractor and was able to look at those available funds and identify a scope of work that we could go ahead and pull out from the, the total work identified within the bid documents, and that was West Soundside Road. And so the staff recommendation coming forward would identify the total scope of work identified, with the exception of West Soundside Road, and that amount would be one million seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars for an award to Fred Smith Company, who was the, had submitted the lowest responsive responsible bid. And so the requested board actions are board action number one, which would be consideration of a budget amendment in the amount of one million sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars to permit the adjusted scope of work that I had just covered, and then two would be for the consideration of a notice of award to Fred Smith Company for the construction bid in the amount of one million seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and, and to authorize the town manager to execute the construction contract contingent upon attorney review. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have pertaining to this.
Any questions? I don't see any questions. It's David. Andy, anything to offer on the budget amendment?
No, I mean, Amy, Amy and David worked on the table in the memo, pretty well explains, you know, you've got the money we budgeted this year, plus the money we didn't spend last year, and then the money we identified to make up for the shortfall. And so even though it's a million dollar budget amendment, that, you know, there's And so even though it's a million dollar budget amendment, that, you know, there's probably about 800,000 dollars that were unused funds from last year that, that's part of the budget amendment.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so, so board, let's take these one at a time. First item would be consideration of the budget amendment as presented. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve budget amendment request in the amount of 1,69,544 dollars.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Second is, would be consideration of the notice of award and authorizing the town manager to execute the contract. Is there a motion to that effect?
It's a move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Sears. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you. All hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. And thank you, David. Getting bids that close together is partly a tribute to documenting the work. And so we really appreciate all the effort that's put into that. Thank you.
All right, and thank you. I just wanted to add that we'll go ahead and we'll add, we'll issue the notice of award today. We've got a pre-construction meeting set up, all in hopes of going ahead and getting this started as soon as possible. And we did have this project sequenced with Old Nags Head Cove being the highest priority. And so we made sure to go ahead and cover that. We'll keep the board in the loop as far as the schedule as we move forward.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And David is, has spoken to me about sending letters to all the property owners in these areas, notifying them of the project work.
Certainly. Keeping our liaisons in that neighborhood and keeping them updated.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
You guys did a good, good job, I think, with the water line work, keeping all of that coordinated. So just carry on. That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town attorney. Mr. Laugn?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In addition to the items that I have listed or recommended for closed session later in the meeting, I did have one open session item to announce for the board. I'm pleased to inform you that Lauren Wamble, who has done work for the town when we've had conflicts, is joining our firm effective January 1st. So you may see her again when we don't have conflicts. And we may have to find someone else who can handle matters when we do. But, you know, she has a local government practice, and I expect she'll be, she'll be here some to help with, with matters on occasion.
That's great news.
She's done a good job when she's been here. Our congratulations to your firm.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we're pretty excited about it, and she's excited. She'll start January 1st. And yesterday, they started making renovations to the conference room across from my office to create a space for her and her assistant, who will be joining. But kind of interesting, her, her legal assistant used to work for us. And in fact, she was my legal assistant back when we did the first beach nourishment project. And she had a real estate background, and she was excellent at preparing all the 175 complaints that we had to prepare, along with the title notes and so forth. I went with each one of those. That was like the favorite project she worked on for me. So I'm looking forward to having her back, too.
Oh, very nice. Good. Somebody with some history and jump right in. That's, that's great news. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And then we will have the closed session items a little further down. That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town manager. Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, we have three items today. The first one is an update on Soundside Roads, the access to Jockeys Ridge State Park. And obviously, this is something the board has been talking about for some time. When we had a working group discussing the issue, we had several residents of the area included on the working group, and we had agreed to try and meet at least twice a year to kind of go over what concerns they have and what's working and what's not, be able to liaison back to the state park staff on any issues of concern. And so we, we did meet on, I believe, October 21st with several residents back there, Megan Vaughn, Brian Harvey, and Michelle Madden-Smith. And we talked about a variety of things that were going on. Just an update on what we've done, and this is post-board action in the spring. We installed the radar speed limit signs that the board approved earlier in the spring, as well as the speed cushions. And they're both on the east side of the entrance to Jockeys Ridge State Park access. And we've been measuring speed. The signs do collect speed data. And, and Police Chief Perry Hale was at the working group meeting along with Kelly Wyatt and Nancy Carowan. And Perry provided an update to the, the citizens back there on the speed compliance. And it shows a pretty good compliance. I believe we had, the 85th percentile of speeds were 24 miles per hour. So I think that the, the general feeling is that the speed cushions and the signs are working fairly well in controlling speeds. And I, and the residents did acknowledge that in the meeting that we had, that they feel like those things are working fairly well. And so we really don't have any plans to change that at this point. I know Perry was conducting a study. You can turn off the display on those signs and still collect speed data. And so he did that for the last month, just to see how that changed things. And I, I think he could probably give a better update on that than I can. But I, I do believe that has shown that the, the display does help with the speed compliance.
Perry, would you come speak to that? Because we talked about that in another neighborhood setting, I think in the Cove, hoping that the display was going to improve behavior. And so it's important, I think, that we know the difference.
Yes, sir. And this Thursday is actually the 30-day mark. So we're still, have the signs off right now. We were going to start at November the 1st and run it through the end of November. We got a little bit behind with other items that we were concerned with in town with other things going on. So they got delayed, and it was the second week of November when we cut the display off. So that sign, the 30 days on Thursday, I do believe, after speaking with David Ryan about it. We did cut them off in Whalebone for two weeks, I believe it was. And the difference in speed was less than a mile and a half per hour. Mile, one and a half miles per hour difference from the display. We still firmly believe that the visual effects do make a, a big difference, especially the way we have them set up where, at a certain speed, they will flash red and blue lights or red and white lights at you to even draw your attention a little bit more to it. But when the, the speed is a little bit over, the speed is displayed in red. So we, we are firmly believing that the visual effects do make a big difference in these signs.
Okay, good. I finally conditioned myself to go 45 on the causeway. So something's working. Commissioner Sears or Commissioner Cahoon? Anybody?
Thank you.
No? Great. Thank you very much. This was also raised at the mayor's luncheon. And so you may hear from your fellow chiefs about how that system is working because getting improved performance on, on residential streets was a, was a topic that we talked about. And I told them what we were doing with signage. So, thank you.
They are working. I will say, though, that in that meeting, I did provide some numbers. I don't have them all with me because they didn't know I'd be speaking, but traffic stops still a lot.
Oh, yes, sir. Got it. All right. Thank you very much. All right, Andy?
Okay, thank you. And thank you, chief. So a little bit more about the meeting we held, you know, I, I think the, the group still expressed quite a few concerns about the access, primarily regarding just the overall volume of traffic that visits the access. And though I believe the, the numbers are slightly down this off-season from what we've seen the past few years, the, the peak season numbers were pretty high in visiting the access. I have been provided with a number of photographs over the last few months from several residents showing some of the congestion and chaos that occurs inside the access with people double parked and unloading and offloading and various things that happen at the entrance or inside the access. And I think the general consensus from the community is they would really like to see a ranger stationed over at the access during the peak season. And obviously, that's not something we have control over, but it's something that I have passed along to Superintendent Joy Greenwood. Obviously, other concerns that they noted were water quality issues and the public notification of those. And we receive notifications at the town when there's a water quality advisory posted. And we have been forwarding that out to the community on social media. And residents had asked that. We, we did that. And other concerns, just the general behavior in the parking lot and the responsiveness of state park staff. So that was essentially the summary of our meeting. We agreed to keep doing what we were doing and coordinating with the state park staff on issues that, that they bring up. Other things that have happened, we agreed to remove the old walkway. That was on the south side of the entrance, the old walkway that was in disrepair. That provided a, a viewing platform at the end. We did that earlier this year. We also helped them close up that area. They've placed some sand fencing, and they're going to allow the vegetation to grow back in. And we also loaned the state park a Moby mat to put over towards the, the main walkway just to provide some form of wheelchair access for the summer. But I have talked to the state park staff about transitioning away from that and, and having them do that. And that there's probably a future need to provide more permanent ADA compliant access to the beach over there, and that they need to go ahead and start putting that on their radar to think about. So beyond that, I met with Joy Greenwood in November, shared the residents' concerns, talked about the ADA issue, and also talked about moving forward, what our arrangement might be. Because in the past, we've had a lease. The lease is now expired. And so we were notified of that. They're certainly willing to consider an MOU to share responsibility for maintaining the access. I'm certainly open to doing that and want to hear feedback from the board on that. I'd like to meet with her. She offered to meet after the beginning of the year just to talk about what would be mutually beneficial out of that kind of arrangement. Some of the things that I would like to, to note on that, you know, we, we would like to see sort of coordination on the events that happen back there, at least notice of any major events that happen back there. We would certainly like notice or the ability to comment on any future improvements that they may propose back there. And certainly would want the residents to be aware and have the ability to comment if they decide to do anything in the future. And, you know, certainly, we agree that the presence back there would be beneficial. And don't know what that looks like, but we would expect that that would be something they would be responsible for in the future. But moving forward, we think a lease agreement is not necessary. The lease agreement was established originally so we could get grant funds to build the access. The access has been constructed and maintained for years now. There's no continued need to have a lease to support any grant. You know, the grants would normally require you to have site control for a period of like 25 years. That's definitely expired now. So in, any agreement would probably be in the form of an MOU and not a lease, and that's what we would like to consider. So welcome any feedback from the board on any of these issues. With the board's blessing, I'd like to try and meet with them after the new year and at least explore the idea of an MOU and what that might contain.
Thank you. Any questions or input for, for Andy?
No, I'm in, I'm in favor of all that. I mean, I think we need to maintain a working relationship, and I think an MOU is a great way to do it. I'd like to be informed of improvements back there as well in coordination of events. And I also feel that we need to work towards some sort of resolution back there, which would possibly put a ranger back there, like Andy said, during the peak season. Or I know there's been some talks of a shuttle from the main parking lot, but I think anything to help those residents back there would be much appreciated, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Cahoon?
I agree with all.
All right.
You're gracious.
Okay. Very good. I think you have consensus to meet and pursue that. Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have is the consideration of, of next year's budget calendar. When we did our strategic plan document last year, we had a narrative that described the process, the annual cycle for budgeting and strategic planning. And so we just concluded our fall strategic planning retreat we held just a few weeks ago. And following that, you know, the departments get together and start to discuss CIP and budget requests that came out of that retreat, any feedback that we received from the board. I think you heard from several departments on some things that they would like you to think about for next year's budget. And so beyond that, you know, we envisioned another, we call it sort of a budget planning session slash mini-retreat that would happen in mid-February to kick off the budget process, process. That's when we would have our CIP requests and our initial budget requests from staff, and we would be able to sort of give you a big picture overview of, of what all of that entails and get some initial direction from the board to go into the, the more detailed budget process. And so from there, we've outlined several workshops, capital improvement workshops and budget workshops that would happen over the course of the spring. And all of this coincides with your normal meeting dates. That's generally how we handled this last year, is we recommended meeting on the days when you already, were already scheduled to meet. If you don't have a regular meeting or, or a mid-month meeting during the session, then we could just have a workshop. If you are planning on having a meeting, we would just propose having a workshop after the meeting concludes. And so essentially, we'd like you to consider approving the calendar that's been presented to you.
All right, thank you. And this calendar would permit, if no continuations were needed, we, needed, we could adopt the budget as early as June the 7th.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the calendar as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Thank you. I appreciate that approach entirely. That's very nice. Thank you.
Okay, great. We also have a discussion on the sand relocation program that Planning Director Kelly Wyatt mentioned. A few months ago, the board approved an amendment to this program. It's a grant program that started out providing grants to oceanfront owners to be able to install sand fencing or, or springing to stabilize the sand that's blowing and moving across their property. The board actually amended the grant program to allow them to apply once every three years for a grant to be able to relocate sand that has piled up on their structures back over to the ocean beach. And since we have started this, it's been very successful. As Kelly mentioned, we, we are at, you know, beginning of December. We haven't even entered the spring season, and we're already maxed out with the money that was budgeted. So, you know, even since the time, as Kelly stated, the, the memo was drafted, it's changed. And so we're asking for another $100,000 to continue this program based on the level of interest and also based on the amount of sand that has moved so far this year. We had a very dynamic and intense fall with weather events. And so we have seen a lot of sand, and I know Connor and Kate and, and other staff have been very busy dealing with sand relocation. And so we're, we're asking for the board to approve this additional fund. I did want to, to cover one thing. You know, Kate, I asked Kate to go back and look at some numbers based on the last three years. So in the last three years, we've had a total of 529 sand relocation permits issued. And so, you know, that, that's, that's averaging, you know, anywhere from 150 to 170 permits per year. And so based on the grant amount of $3,500, if we were to provide every unique address with one grant every three years, that would be 1.7 million dollars. And so that, that's probably a little bit more than we originally envisioned for, for this grant program. So, you know, we're, we just want to see how this goes. You know, we're not sure that every single person who does any relocation will apply for a grant, but, but it's likely. And it could cause people that haven't been moving sand to move sand because of the availability of funds. And I believe that one of the ideas behind this is that we could have, we could use some of the sales tax money that goes into the beach nourishment fund to pay for this. However, with that, that amount of money, that, that sort of changes our ability to just use that. And so it's, it's just food for thought moving forward, and, and we probably need to talk about this in more detail at, at some other time. But, but this, this amendment would put us up to 270,000 dollars this year. You know, to get one-third of the amount, you know, assuming that's one permit every three years, we would have to budget almost 600,000 dollars a year to give everybody a grant. So.
Well, I, my recollection is that the board actually suggested an increase when this came up before. And so the number that we have was actually an increase over, over the initial discussion. And, and the board said at that time, if my recollection is correct, that we would put more money in this if this program was successful. So, so that's, that's where we are. And appreciate the, sort of the, the longer term thinking. I'm, I'm, I'm glad it worked. And I appreciate Nags Head taking the weed on doing something like that. like this. So, commissioners?
I'm in favor moving forward.
Okay.
Heard a lot of po, uh, positive feedback from this program, so glad we're doing it.
Great, great. Commissioner Sanders?
Likewise.
Okay. In that case, a, uh, motion to approve the, uh, Capitol Project Ordinance Amendment Number Six would be in order.
So moved.
I have a motion, and I have a second, uh, from Commissioner Sears. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you.
I, I had one more thing I'd like to mention real briefly. Um, and I talked to, I think, at least, I think I talked to the mayor about this, and I talked to John Leidy about it. Carolyn has been asking me about this, but as the board is aware, uh, ever since COVID, uh, we began taking comments, uh, electronically, and when people have asked for them to be read into the record, we've accommodated that request. And that is, that is not a practice that we had done prior to COVID. And we've had several meetings where we've received quite a few comments, and that has added quite a bit of time to the public comment period. And in some cases, the, the amount of time that they're getting to read these letters exceeds what they would, would get if they appeared in per, person, and we're limited to what we limit the time, the public comment period to. So, we just wanted to, to throw this out there to the board. Do we wanna con, continue to handle it this way? Do we wanna continue to read, uh, written comments into the record, or do we wanna provide any more guidance on how we're gonna handle the written comments moving forward?
Well, and I, I'd like for, for Mr. Le, because, you know, this, after COVID, the, the, the best example was, uh, when we, we were getting comments, and the letters, writers were specifically asking that it be read into the record. Um, and we mentioned, John and I talked about that briefly and decided, well, n, n, no harm done, probably. But it, I think takes away from, from the benefit of actually appearing in the meeting and making your comments. Um, uh, and, you know, have, reading those comments, um, if you, if you have that as a precedent, then how do you edit them? If somebody starts sending you really nasty stuff, and you, you, you're sort of, you're sort of stuck. So, uh, you know, I, I'd be in favor of returning, if, if it's permitted, um, and, and we're not obligated, uh, you know, I personally would like for us to go back to simply entering written comments into the record and not reading them.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, with the end of the state of emergency, the board's statutory authority to have remote meetings, um, has expired. Uh, but one of the conditions of, of having remote meetings, where, where any one of the members of the board participated through electronic means, was that you allow people to submit public comments in writing in advance of the meeting that would be read at the meeting. And since that's now expired, it's no longer required. So you, you do have the discretion to discontinue that practice if you wish. Um, I do think it's probably best to do it in a uniform way going forward. So if you're not going to do it now, I think that's the way to, to announce it. Um, but any written comments that are submitted either for public comment sessions or in a public hearing for a legislative matter can be simply added to the record. When somebody wants to submit a public comment, uh, or a comment of some sort on a matter that there's a, a quasi-judicial hearing on, those can't be added to the record in that fashion. You know, those would be external evidence. So, um, and we can address that in the context of a quasi-judicial hearing or a legislative hearing, but I think in the context of the standard public, uh, comment session at the beginning of every meeting, I think it's up to the board to decide whether you wanna continue that or not. And I feel comfortable if you want to discontinue that practice.
Okay, right, thank you. Commissioners, any thoughts about that?
I think adding it to the record, if allowed, is fine.
Okay, thank you.
I think adding it to the record, but also making sure that we have it prior to the meeting so we can read them.
Yes, okay. Yep, yes, okay. That, that's a good point, because they, they may affect our thinking on that.
Well, I'd like to have their comments.
Have their comments in. All right, thank you. I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, all right. But thank you, then.
So, so essentially, w, we would say, any comments we've received, we're gonna go ahead and enter into the record, but we're not gonna read them aloud.
Yes.
And that's just for a public comment or legislative?
I think it's just for public comment. Uh, I think when we get to a legislative hearing, we'll just decide that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
I think it's also probably appropriate to maybe make a notation on the, uh, on, on the agendas going forward for the public comments, so people will know. Maybe on, maybe a, an, an announcement somewhere on the town's website, but also on the next several agendas, maybe just putting in parentheses that written public comments will not be read, but will be shared with the board, you know, prior to the, prior to the meeting.
All right, okay. All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Uh, anything else from you, Andy?
No, thank you, that's it.
All right. So that brings us to the, um, Board of Commissioners' agenda. Commissioner Sanders, do you have anything to add today?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Cahoon?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Sears?
I would like to, to say great job to those who fixed the water leak over at the village this past week, and also recognize all, all of our employees for a great year.
Yeah, they, they, you know, this, this board, um, took a while, but this board really got the balls rolling on a number of things, and the, the staff has really, I think, stepped up to, to deal with that. Uh, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner.
Appreciate that. That brings us then to the, uh, mayor's agenda. The first item is consideration of the twenty-twenty-three Board of Commissioners' meeting calendar. And if I recall correctly, I'm not looking at it, but I believe that just has our, uh, first and mid-month meeting, um, and all of those now at nine AM, which is what's been our practice anyway. So, a motion to adopt would be in order.
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you very much for that. Um, the second is a request for the Lightkeeper NAGS Header nominations. Uh, the board has talked about trying to rejuvenate this, uh, process of getting these nominations. Uh, NAGS Head Board of Commissioners recognizes individuals who have made important contributions to the town through their NAGS Head Lightkeeper and NAGS Header Awards. And I'm, I'm doing this in part for the benefit of the public, because this is the time for, to encourage nominations. Now, the Lightkeeper Award distinguishes an individual who shows significant personal and professional leadership in the NAGS Head community. The NAGS Header Award recognizes a special deceased person who has made a difference in the town and who has shaped the culture of NAGS Head since its incorporation in nineteen sixty-one. Uh, these will be, awardees will be recognized at the regular June Board of Commissioners' meeting, which is the town's anniversary month. Um, the NAGS Header Award is described as honoring a special deceased person that did a lot for the town over the years. This person did not necessarily have to be a NAGS Head resident, but, but had NAGS Head ties. And these, uh, documents are on the town's website, along with the nomination forms. Uh, the NAGS Head Lightkeeper Award was developed to honor persons who have shaped the image and direction of NAGS Head, making significant contributions to the town through their time, actions, talents, and dedication. Nominees shall be outstanding individuals who have been involved in community service such as boards, commissions, task forces, agencies, volunteer organizations, or community groups of all kinds, and shall have demonstrated a sustained, sustained commitment to our community. Uh, so I commend these to our public. It's my understanding that we do have some nominations already, already received. Um, and so, uh, I would encourage by social media and other means of outreach the town has to, uh, encourage and remind people of these, uh, opportunities. Um, one of the things I would like to do is, um, also for our next agenda, um, it is time, uh, for the, uh, Town Manager's Review, and so I would ask that that be put on the next, uh, next agenda for our discussion.
December or January?
Uh, January. I'm sorry. We do have another meeting in Deci, I'm sorry, for the January meeting. Yes, for the January meeting. Thank you. Um, the other thing, um, is, uh, I want to recognize, you know Mayor Medlin down at Surf City. Uh, he announced by social media, uh, yesterday that he is resigning. After thirty years of service, he, uh, disclosed that he has some health issues.
Yes.
And, um, and so I, he's a, he's a great guy. Um, he's been a bit of a role model. I, I really looked to him, and, um, and so I give a little bit of a shout-out to Mayor Medlin today for his, his great service to Surf City. Um, the other thing that the board needs to talk about, um, at this time of year, is, uh, the employee, uh, Christmas bonus. Uh, this is something the board has done, uh, each year. Um, we have changed the form in which we do that, which is, we're not using gift cards. We are adding this to the paycheck. So this is something that we need to do at this meeting if the board is desirous of, of awarding, um, uh, awarding, um, Christmas bonuses. And commission, um, manager, at what level would those be for regular employees and, uh, part-time employees?
Well, what we've been doing is a hundred and fifty for the full-time employees and seventy-five for the part-time employees.
And, and it's configured in such a way that that's the net that they receive through the payroll?
Well, it's, it's configured in a way so they would receive a hundred dollars net.
Okay.
So we budget that amount of money so that after all the deductions, that's what they net and?
Okay, all right.
Part-time, closer to fifty then.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any discussion?
I'm totally in favor, but I would hope that all the employees would remember that they have one person to thank for this bonus, and that's former Commissioner Doug Ramali. Cause Doug was such a strong supporter and got the board to adopt it, and I don't, I think we'd be remiss if we did not at least remember and recognize that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I did not know that, and so I'm, I'm glad to know that.
I remember that.
Yep, very good.
Um, two things. This might be a question for Amy, but by moving this from the gift card to this, is this a legal situation for payroll? And the second on that is, you know, I think sometimes when you give a bonus and you give it in a check, it gets lost, and there's not really, I mean, to some, it's there, to some, it's not there. And I think more people recognize they got something, when, just like today, when you handed our Employee of the Year that extra card, it's just that little token of something. Um, but for you, Amy, on this, and we talked about it, what the net is, the net is off of this, is that because we have to show this in payroll? Is that because we elect to show this in payroll? And what's the difference in?
Well?
Overall cost and, and benefit to the employee?
I'll give you a little background about what happened last year. So, last year, a lot of the gift cards got hacked before they even were distributed. So we've had several employees that tried to use the gift cards, and when they went to use them, they were compromised. So, I don't know if that was just, you know, a bad batch of cards we got or, or what, but we had several instances last year where a lot of the cards got compromised. So we didn't wanna put, you know, anybody in an uncomfortable situation where that had happened again. So that was one thing that happened last year. Um, and then, yes, it's completely legal. It's not taxed at a bonus rate because it's within the pay period. Um, so it's illegal, uh, absolutely. And, you know, some, some people may or may not like this, I guess, but you do get, you know, the 401K put in that you would, as your regular paycheck, you know, it goes into your retirement. So, um, you get, I guess, all the good and bad things that come out of your paycheck, but you, you do get the town contribution to your 401K also, um, and the town contribution to your retirement as part of, um, the, uh, putting it in your paycheck, whereas if it was a gift card, you wouldn't get those additional contributions.
Is that a separate paycheck totally? I mean, how?
No, we're gonna put it in with this paycheck. And we have, we have, uh, some messaging that we can, that we're gonna send out to everybody, just, you know, we're not gonna, we're gonna let everybody know. Um, we're not gonna just kind of let them get their pay stuff. So we're, we're definitely doing some messaging, so, so people are aware of it.
Cause it's direct deposit, you don't even know you got a change in your paycheck. We, we, we send this message. They get like a Christmas message from the Board of Commissioners that tells them they got it, and, you know, we try to make it nice.
Okay, yeah.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So approved, and, and thank you again to our employees. Um, it seems like we can't thank them, we can't thank them enough. Um, so that brings us to, um, and before we go to our closed session, is there any other business to come before the board? Hearing none, then a motion to go into closed session would be in order.
So moved.
For the purposes listed on the agenda. Yeah, I'll just, the, the motion that we need is, uh, to enter closed session is allowed by General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A three, in order to consult with the town attorney regarding matters protected by the attorney-client privilege, and to preserve that privilege, including the cases of the town versus Cherry Inc., uh, the town versus Satterfield Landing, the town versus Budlong, and the town versus two oh five Baltic Street.
Okay. Second.
So I have a motion to that effect from Commissioner Sears and a second from Commissioner Cahoon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. The board will be in closed session.
Session to discuss, uh, but no actions were taken.
Okay, uh, that brings us to, uh, a motion to recess to nine AM on Wednesday, December the twenty-first would be in order.
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you.
Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas to everyone.